Good things.
Yes.
But, uh, I haven't heard something like that.
Yeah.
It's not a little championship.
Everything's trying to buy it.
True, everybody.
Yeah.
They can use it.
Also, perhaps these are the areas.
Those things happen around the corner.
At least.
In this class.
I was gonna say, that was rare.
The neighbors.
To get a reading.
My grandfather was.
From a standpoint, you see, Nashville.
Well, there.
He actually had a full camp.
It's probably.
Yeah.
Onside.
Is that my brother?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Finished his.
He is starting to finish his.
Finished his.
I agree with him.
No, but it follows that I'm.
I guess.
The temperature.
There, I'm just driving. There's, I saw some motion. I'm not sure on the background, but they're trying to do some change.
Don't get any. Correct.
To try to.
Throw it on the water and have it be.
Buy. And then the next.
I'm a.
There they are.
Call them on.
That's it.
People are doing.
Trying to.
By any means. That's correct.
Free release dish.
Yeah, all of it. By doing some things, that's all. My law.
I know.
If you're possible.
Procedure is that if.
Just the process.
You come in for a nine twelve. Yeah. So I need a box. Five gallon bucket.
You just have to hang it.
If you're not.
That's my granddaughter. Yeah, I, I just go flowers. I, I got one pepper plant.
You know, it used to be.
Outside of the house in the pot. But, um, I, basically, out in my patio, my brothers. Here. Still dabbling in agriculture. And, uh, I convinced one of them to give me some of their. Call them cow leg tubs. They put a, put a syrup in it, mix it like a plastic tub. And then mix minerals in it, in the cow. Correct. And I get the, the vitamins, whatever minerals they need. And once the end, they make a company that take it back. And I manage to get, get fish in them, and then I would learn how to hold it in the bottom. So the water. And that's what I use on containers on the patio. And, uh, right now, I've got perilic. And it's, it's been, uh. It's, um.
It's not that.
Um. Hot, uh, drink and all that. And, uh.
And if it's just for flowers, it's called. Power.
Right. And my wife, we talked on the phone, she was telling folks. We have flowers on the patio, it was a freak, girlfriend. Maybe you don't quit my quit. Give me that. And, uh, we. But, uh, it's, it's this last twelve months. It's going to be, I've been planting flowers, flowers, blooming plants. One day I'll say. Exactly what he told me. Before the snow, I mean, when the snow's coming, it got much snow. It's on the very top. Believe it or not, it all melts up.
So I'll be able to.
I still have my good flowers. It was, but they were.
That other guy's flowers.
Yeah.
But you're here to do that.
Yeah.
It was.
Is that what your passion? I mean, that's what your passion is. But you don't, but you could have, like, the only way to go.
Yeah. It's a problem. Also, it's a plan here. Running outside.
Yeah. Okay.
All those things I'm interested. You?
Okay. I'm trying to.
Yeah.
Standing there.
One and two. You're going to name the flower. Your big flower. And.
I think I have.
Everyone. Grow out from it. And then they come.
Percussion, but I don't do that. Kid.
Yeah. Keep it rolling outside. I'd like to play around. And then just. You'll do the run and destroy. If you can play around. And that's probably. That's why. That was. Make it through this one.
Oh, really?
It's.
We're sure.
I'm.
We can do.
That was good. You kind of feel. People, I think. So, uh.
Ocean stuff.
And then very powerful.
There's a bunch of things.
That's always been fine. I'm not trying to.
Yeah.
Good afternoon. My name's Andrea Neil Williams. I am a representative for Office of Community Development. My address is eleven oh five Island Park Boulevard, Shreveport Louisiana seven eleven oh five.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you.
Can you tell us a little bit about this request?
Yes, this request is a open air farmers market that came from a response of a grant that the City of Shreveport Community Development in the city of, um, in the Shreveport Police Department received. Those funds additional to some community block grant dollars will be used to make this open air market. A nonprofit will run it, will be able to provide economic stimulation for that area, provide food trucks to come, and just a distribution spot site for nonprofits in that area to, um, use. It'll bring revitalization back to that major thoroughfare of the Pier Avenue area.
All right. All right. Now, this is a, well, let me just hold off. Any comments from board members?
Just a little more information. You mentioned food trucks, uh, fresh fruits.
Fresh fruit, produce. They'll be able to, uh, come there. Um, also crafters, little vendors. It's gonna be open air where anybody could come and use that facility. And the nonprofit that gets the operations, um, will be able to provide a calendar of events and keep it fully stocked with people using that area.
Is this a weekend event or hours of operation?
It will start off with weekend, but it will be allowed like, um, Monday through Friday for like lunchtime, you know, twelve to six.
Okay. Any other board members have questions?
It's a vacant lot at the moment. It's nothing. I think there were maybe some houses that were there years ago, but it's vacant and it's currently owned by the city.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Do you know if, uh, the city's coordinated with, uh, NL cog on any kind of right of way potential for intercity connector for I forty-nine?
Yes, this is not in that area.
It's off of.
It's off.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions? I believe there are some stipulations that goes along with that, if I remember reading that correctly. Board members, subject to approval of the city, the city council? Did I see that? All right. Any more questions from Ms. Williams?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone present who care to speak in opposition to this request? Any opposition to this request? All right, hearing none, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with steps.
Motion by Mr. Joseph with steps second by?
Ms. Morton.
Mr. Morton. All those in favor, please vote. That motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll move on to case number twenty-one dash thirty-seven. Moore and Associates for a PUD and primary site plan. Ms. Moore, it's good to see you.
Andy Craig, Moore and Associates, thirteen twenty-four North Herm, Suite three oh one, Shreveport seven eleven oh seven. The case for you is, um, small planned unit development and preliminary site plan for a grocery store, and development at the northeast corner of, um, Norris Ferry Road and Southern Loop Circle. It's gonna be a Brookshire grocery store with a fuel station, a pharmacy. It's full service. Uh, the developer, owner of the property is gonna be the developer. They're reserving two outlots facing, uh, with an Norris Ferry Road frontage and a planned ten thousand square foot, um, retail center adjacent to the grocery store. The, um, the PUD designation request was necessary because of the beer and wine that Brookshire's gonna sell, the, um, fuel island, I mean, the fuel station, the drive-through, the pharmacy. Uh, if you can see on the map, the track to the north, although it's vacant, it's residential, residentially zoned. So, C two, what we're asking for, the C two zoning, uh, to sell beer and wine, we would, uh, needed the PUD designation. We've worked extensively with the staff on the site plan. We've, um, provide a lot of amenities for the requested ordinance relief. You see those in the staff report and on the site plan. It's, uh, it's been worked out diligently. Uh, as a result of the neighborhood meeting that we had, um, a few weeks ago, it was very well attended. The neighbors had, the, the main concern they had was the traffic, expected traffic. We do have, if you see the site plan, we do have a driveway coming out adjacent to the Norris Ferry Landing entrance. And, uh, so we have commissioned a traffic impact study, a result of that meeting. It's underway now. We don't have those results, but we will be bound by the recommendation of that. You can see the, the entrance here. This is, uh, it matches up because of safety issues. We have to match up with that existing driveway there going into Norris Ferry Landing. So, the traffic impact study will determine if there's any improvements needed to that intersection. And we'll be bound to do that if, if they are. Um, there was also some concern about losing the, uh, green and natural appearance of that tract. It's vacant, pretty thickly wooded. And so, we just finished up this past week, a, um, a tree survey on the track. We're gonna preserve all the trees that we can, uh, with, uh, can you put the site plan back up, Ben? As you can see, it's gonna be a lot of concrete there, so, uh, we will be able to save some trees, but there not gonna be a whole lot. We, we definitely are gonna do what we can. Hopefully, um, we'll leave them and we can keep them alive. But there is gonna be an attempt to, to do that. Brookshire was willing to listen to the neighbors and, uh, address any concerns that they have. We rearranged the traffic pattern for the trucks to come out to, um, the Southern Loop Circle and Norris Ferry intersection, avoid the Norris Ferry Landing intersection. Uh, and that is preferable anyway because there is a traffic light in its control at Norris Ferry and Southern Loop. So, that would be the preferred entrance and exit for the trucks anyway. So, uh, we, we have arranged the, uh, truck traffic to help with that. I'll be happy to answer any questions I can.
All right. Do we have any questions, board members, for Mr. Craig? I understand it was the second largest neighborhood participation meeting we've had. Pine Road was the largest. I can tell you that already. All right. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone else care to speak in favor? Is there anyone present who care to speak in opposition to this request? Any opposition to this request? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the steps.
Motion to approve with the steps by Mr. Curtis Joseph.
Second.
Second by Ms. Newbert. All those in favor, please vote yes. All right. That motion carries. At this particular time, we'll move on to item, case number, item number twelve. Case number twenty-one dash forty-seven dash C, UDC amendment. Mr. Adam Bailey?
I think the applicant is here, Mr. Tohren.
Sorry.
I don't know if Mr. Furlong was interested in speaking.
Good afternoon. Patrick Furlong, city engineer. Uh, work here in this building at five oh five Travis, Suite three hundred. So, I submitted, uh, this proposed revision for several reasons. Uh, it's, is to address where the city engineer is mentioned in the UDC. Let me just say that this is, uh, the tip of the iceberg of the changes that I'm making, uh, or will propose. Um, in the past two years, I've made a lot of changes within my department, major changes that were needed, uh, stuff that was just decades old and inefficient. Um, and, and now I'm working towards permitting and development as far as engineering's involvement. So, if you look in the UDC, it mentions a city engineer and says a city engineer does a lot of stuff that the city engineer has nothing to do with. So, this is an attempt to eliminate confusion and to remove that. There, what I submitted has some additional recommendations from the MPC, which I don't, I don't really understand or know about, uh, or agree with. I just know about what I submitted is what I recommend we move forward with. And I just wanted to kind of explain what this was and what I was trying to do. And if anybody has any questions, I'd, I'd be happy to take those.
Mr. Olson?
Yeah, I have a question. How did you and your department go about crafting this and the process that was involved? I mean, did, did you have a lot of input from different folks in the department or the?
With the revisions?
Yeah.
Basically, I just did a word search for city engineer and, and looked at everything that it's mentioned city engineer with. And, and everything that, that I commented on, we didn't have any involvement. So, there's, there's lots of issues that other departments have with UDC. It mentions a lot of stuff that doesn't happen, that other departments don't use it for. It needs major revisions for stuff that, um, the MPC wants us to work within. But this is, this was like the low hanging fruit that I could address to eliminate confusion immediately. But I do, um, intend to keep working on the UDC, either deleting large sections or, or complete revisions. But, yeah, I, I worked with staff, our, our staff to, to look at all these. And then, then I sent out an email to all the, I don't think anything was deleted. I think I recommended other people who were more appropriate. And I sent out an email to, to those other, uh, department heads, asking, say, hey, I don't know if you're the person that should be here, but I know it's not me. And I got very few comments on that. Water and Sewer, they were, they were happy with it, but I think that's the only comment I got. Um, and then, here we are today. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes, sir. I hear somebody.
I, I'm over here behind.
Go ahead.
Plexiglas. Uh, I did get, and, and I think that all of this is, I think that Patrick is, is taking a very proactive and important steps toward correcting, uh, stuff. I agree with him that when he, when, uh, requirements are in the ordinance and they're not being done, then we need to find out why they're not being done and determine who should be doing them. And I think that, that was real proactive on his part. I, I did get a call from, uh, William Daniel and Gary Norman. William being the director of, uh, Water and Sewer, and, uh, Gary Norman being the director of Public Works. And they would like to defer and continue this for a month to allow an opportunity to, to meet with, uh, the four of us to meet, uh, to talk about, uh, you know, uh, they don't agree with some of the recommendations, uh, and I guess none of us really agree with the, the whole process, but it would give us an opportunity to sit down together and, uh, determine who would be best suited to perform these tasks. Uh, I, we very much respect, uh, Mr. Furlong, decisions and determinations that they're not city engineering functions, but it would give us an opportunity to try to figure out who should be doing, uh, these things. And, uh, they just asked me to ask the board to defer and continue this for a month to allow for that meeting, I think. And I may be incorrectly, Patrick, but I think they were trying to meet yesterday with you.
No, we, we met today and we discussed development as a whole. So, the whole development process needs major improvement, um, as far as we're concerned. And we all agree with that. Um, so, yeah, so it was mentioned, the public works director in some places and the, and the director of MPC in some places. I sent the email to everybody. Y'all did not respond. Y'all sent the report. I said, hey, let's sit down and meet and let's talk about this. You said you didn't wanna meet. So, here I am today, trying to clean it up. You know, if y'all wanna delay it, y'all can delay it, but, but there's no benefit to delay it, delaying it. There's benefit to cleaning it up.
And, and all I'm saying, in all fairness, uh, now, they may have shared something with you today that they did not share with me on yesterday. And if that's, if that's the, the case, then I will stand corrected. But they were not totally supportive of the recommendations that you were making in reference to functions that be, should be being performed by the Department of Public Works and the Water and Sewer. And they did say to me that, uh, they would like to sit down, and we've all agreed to sit down and, and, and talk about, uh, uh, the, these functions to determine where these functions should, should actually fall. Basically, what we have today is how you feel they should fall, but it would, it would be probably helpful if you got a recommendation from the other departments like you got from the MPC as to, you know, how we feel these functions should, should fall. And that's the only reason that I'm sharing this with you, that that's what they had shared with me, that they would prefer to, uh, meet and they will possibly make some recommendations to amendments to, to address these concerns.
I, I would like to.
Ms. Newbert?
Ask some questions here, 'cause I had some questions about this yesterday when it came up in the work session. Um, I'm just looking at amendment number six. Just take number six, for example. It says section eight point five, and I'm a little ways into the header there. Design of vehicle parking spaces. Okay? The word design is, indicates to me that that would be a professional licensed person that would have the responsibility. And I, and I'm thinking design, I don't know, does, does that include just the layout of the, like when you're laying out, the sizes of the parking places? Are we talking about the concrete pour?
Where, where is this?
It's amendment number six. I just picked one.
Like H, surfacing?
Design of vehicle parking spaces. It's on in, under amendment number six.
Article number eight.
They're surfacing. So, we're talking just the surfacing. I'm just trying to understand how deep this request is gonna go, because if this is, excuse me?
Are you looking at the staff report or the MPC?
I'm looking at the, the.
Staff report. So, what you're referring to is the design of vehicle parking spaces, actually the name of the section?
Yes, I'm sorry.
So, if you actually go down.
I apologize.
And look at the exhibit A.
Page number two.
And those amendments will specifically tell you what that particular amendment is talking about.
Right. So, I'm just asking for an understanding of what we are trying to separate here, I think is what I'm asking.
So, is this driveway design, C cross-section servitudes, cross-access servitudes?
Amend surfacing in article eight, all street parking and loading, section eight point five, design of vehicle parking spaces. I just chose something.
I don't think Patrick has the staff report.
What you're looking at, look at number six.
Number six?
Hold up, hold up.
About, about surfacing?
Correct.
About pervious paving?
Yeah. So, my question is, is that something that's more suited for someone in the engineering department to do, basically? Or is it something more suited for someone on the MPC staff to do?
Pervious paving? I, I don't know what the engineering department's concerned with pervious paving would be. This is pavement that's designed to absorb the water into, into the below. It is, it is a development choice. It's private development. It's not city infrastructure. It's, it's nothing that we work with. Whether they have pervious pavement or, or conventional concrete in their parking lot, it's not something that we, we work with. It's, it's not.
So, when something comes into the MPC staff, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out where this is a problem for the city. Is, are things getting bottlenecked or, or?
Well, it's, it, let me give you an example. Um, it says in here, the city engineer will approve all curb cuts.
Okay.
The MPC delayed a, a driveway, uh, permit a few weeks ago because it, it said the city engineer is required for approval. I have no involvement in that whole process.
But yet you're listed here.
But yet I'm listed here. It delayed the applicant. It drove them nuts. They were running around for days, submitting to the, I think to the ZBA, just trying to figure out what to do. They called me. I called around. I spent, I spent a lot of my day trying to figure out what to do. I said, I said, Mr. Clark, I'll approve it. I have nothing to do with it. But if, if the permit office, who is in charge of it, if they're good with it, I'm good with it. I'll put my name as approved as long as the permit office is good with it. I don't know where the site was. I don't know what the driveway looked like, but that, that happened. And, and a lot of, but, but let me say this.
Hold on, can you stick with that one?
Sure.
Okay. So, what was the ultimate resolution of that?
The resolution?
Yeah.
He got his permit as soon as I said it was approved.
Because you approved it?
Yes.
Something that you were saying is not within your purview?
I knew nothing about it. As long as the permit office said it was, they were good with it, I said I'll approve it. Because they, they have the traffic engineer look at it. They have the, the building, uh, department look at it. They review the application. It's their permit. I don't, it doesn't even come to me. They never come to me to look.
And, and I, I would like to say we certainly don't wanna have a situation where we have people being bounced around inside departments.
It happens. Our, our permitting is very confusing.
Yeah.
Very confusing. So, this, like I said, this is just the tip of the iceberg of the changes. The meeting I had with, with William Daniel and Gary Norman was primarily about permitting and about how it affects city infrastructure. There's, there's a lot of missing, miss, that's getting missed out on, and there's a lot that we can do better. And there's lots of organization, like, like somebody emailed about a generator. Well, I'm just going off about improvements to permitting.
Let me say this, sir, if you'd let me interrupt. I hear where you are. Uh, what my question for you is, are you not amicable to deferring and continuing this so that the kinds of discussions that you're sharing with us could be hashed out amongst the individuals that you've enumerated that are involved in this?
Yes, sir.
I hear my staff members, our staff, asking for time to do that. Are you amicable to that?
It was my idea. Let me just, let me just say, as soon as I drafted this up, I sent to Mr. Clark, Mr. Norman, Mr. Daniel, traffic engineer. I didn't hear, I don't think I heard from anybody but the director of Water and Sewer. I copied everybody, said, hey, let's proceed with this. Nobody said anything. The staff report came out, um, not agreeing with some of the stuff. I said, Mr. Clark, let's meet. And you declined to meet, correct?
That's correct. Go ahead.
So, that's what I tried to do from day one. I tried multiple times. I'll still do it. I'm happy to do it. But just please note for the record, I've been trying to do this.
So, why, why is it up for a vote now for us to do this as opposed to working this out, uh, before this? I'm wondering.
Ms, Ms, Mr. Furlong, uh, submitted, co-texted amendments for, for approval to change the, the ordinance. When that happens, it's, a staff report is generated and is placed before this board for review and recommendations. I real, I, I, like I shared with you today, I mean, I'm not gonna get into a bunch of arguments, but as I shared with you today, that, uh, the director of Public Works and the director of Water and Sewer said that they were not in agreement with these recommendations and that they would prefer, if there was an opportunity, to sit down and discuss and go through, uh, these, uh, these recommendations and determine who should be performing these duties. And that's why I presented to you that, uh, that was their request. And I think it's a very good request, because you're talking about bouncing around citizens. If they're not amicable to performing these, these tasks, uh, they still just sit out there. But I think for once and for all, it would be a good opportunity to, to, for us to come to some agreements as to who is supposed, who is really supposed to be, uh, performing these tasks and make that recommendation to you. We could've approached it differently, but it came from Patrick and not us.
Is there, I, I have a question. Is there a reason why we did, the staff didn't meet with him?
That was not, we felt that that was not a need to meet.
My question, we're talking about the different departments, uh, he can attest to this. I'm representing the city on a case, and I'm trying to get information from all these different departments. I got the lawyer who sued the city on the other end down my back about information. I'm begging from different departments to get. And so, I, I can understand that being an issue, one, if one hand isn't speaking to the other. But to his, his, his point, if it's, if, if he's delineating issues in here that his department has no purview, purview over, and it sounds to me like these other departments are trying to push responsibilities off on the city engineer that should not otherwise be there.
And you might, and you might take into consideration that they may consider that these are functions that should be being performed by the city engineer.
Are they functions that have historically been performed by the city?
I'd like to comment on that.
And, and.
These revisions will make no changes of how, of how the city operates. A lot of these things just aren't getting done today.
In terms of habit and practice.
There are things that a consultant put into the UDC and nobody ever started doing them. That's the honest truth. So, all these changes is gonna change nothing in our operations.
It just cleans up the code.
It just barely cleans up.
I don't know if it cleans up the code. There have been, and Patrick may never admit this, but we've had discussions and there have been a lot of changes that have been made that he felt were not city engineer functions, that we omit, some of them that we are doing, some of them that, uh, we agreed that the city engineer would consider, continue to do. I think that the one thing that he and I agree on today is that this is gonna be a lengthy process because, uh, he's absolutely right. Uh, there, there are a lot of problems that are still involved with the Unified Development Code. And this is one of those processes that is, in my opinion, and I've shared this and we're working on it, is an onerous process that, that gets to be confusing and you do a whole lot of things just to get one thing changed. So, there's a lot to be done still. But I'm sharing with you, we wrote our comments, but I'm sharing with you what the other departments have stated. Not saying that they're not wanting to have discussion about this information, but they're not agreeing with what Patrick is saying. He's, he just removed it from the city engineer's say to the public works director.
And, and I met with the public works director about it. Mr. Bailey sent it out for comments. I met with the public works director and he wanted to make some changes. I don't, he must not have ever gotten back with Mr. Bailey.
Right. You said we made our comments.
But I've made every effort possible to, to work with everybody and to coordinate this. It does seem like I'm going in, on it alone, but that's not what I want, and that was not what I tried to do. But, yeah, if, if I'm here standing here, I do wanna push forward with it. But, uh, if y'all wanna delay it, that's, that's fine too, and I'll, I'll attempt to work with everybody again. Uh, it's, so, so, so a delay is not gonna change anything about how we operate. Uh, and approval is not gonna change anything. It's just gonna clean it up. So, maybe delaying it, giving us opportunity to work together, maybe that's the route we need to attempt.
I'm more concerned about the confusion that, that the applicants are facing when, when these things come about. That, and it's nothing more frustrating than to not be able to get ahold of someone that it has the authority and the ability to make a decision on, time is money, people are building, changes are happening, and where they're being bounced from, possibly bounced from department to department with no one and to make that decision officially. You just stated that these are not in your purview, but you're signing off on things just to be able to move applications forward.
Right.
I, I'm just, I, I'm not real sure the, uh, what the outcome of this is gonna be. What, that's what I'm concerned about, is what are we, are we, you're saying there's nothing that's gonna change, but?
We have a big job ahead of us, uh, to improve permitting. And that's what I was meeting with, with William and Gary this morning. Historically, people always say engineering takes care of that. Send it to engineering. I've been here ten years. That's always happened. It's drainage, send it to engineering. Well, there's, there's no drainage ordinance. There's no drainage requirements. Staff tries to look at it, says, hey, well, you should direct your water this way and, and you need to do this. And it's gonna, but it's gonna cost the person five thousand dollars. Why didn't you make everybody else do that? Why are you making me do this? Where's the ordinance that supports this? It's never been there. Engineering and permitting. Why didn't you make everybody else do that? Why are you making me do this? Where's the ordinance that supports this? It's never been there. Engineering and permitting and development has been a mess. And I've been working very, very hard to clean it up. So we have defined the permits that engineering is working with. Instead of the MPC and the permit office sending many, many people up to our office, hey, they're building a swimming pool, tell them what to do. Okay, we'll, we'll make up some requirements. That happened, has happened, many, many times. I'm not going to say every day, but several times a week for years. So we worked real hard to define what is engineering doing in the permit process. And I defined it and I sent out the memo. We're looking at FEMA, special flood hazard areas, stormwater detention, and right away encroachments. Other permits we do are facility permits which don't really come through the permit office, and small cell permits. But that's all we're doing by ordinance. But that leaves a lot of stuff left behind that's not getting looked at. And that was the, the reason for my meeting with, with William and Gary this morning. Because it affects city infrastructure, it affects citizens. I'm like, we have this group of stuff that, that nobody's ever looked at. Engineering's made attempts to look at it, but at the same time MPC and the permit office, they might have been looking at it too. We didn't have any straightforward requirements, any straightforward process. So we worked real hard to define what we're doing, and now we're looking at the stuff that somebody should be doing in the city. Whether it's engineering or the permit office or the MPC, that's where we're at with, that's where I'm at with improving the whole process. And it is not quick. It's going to, I'll be. As a city engineer, my primary responsibility is, is the design and construction of capital projects, the hundreds of millions that we spend every year. And I just want to take this brief moment to say that. I spend about ninety time, ninety percent of my time on permitting and ten percent of my time on what I, what I really should be doing. This is very important to me to get straight because our capital projects and investment that the citizens make in that is very important, and that is, that is my primary duty. So I'm very passionate about getting this straightened out and organized and defined so that I can focus on what, what I should be doing.
So, if I may, let's say we do this, and we take the city engineer out of this terminology and we place it on other departments. Now you stated that this really is not going to change the way that business happens, but in fact, I, I worry that this may cause a situation where we have no one to step forward and say, I'm going to handle that now, because the city engineer may be by virtue of the language not responsible for it, and it may make things worse. These, these are the things I struggle with when I look at this.
I understand. And my, my first suggestion was to delete all this stuff. Mr. Clark said, well, you know, I got to put somebody's name in there. So that's what I did. I put somebody's name in there, and I, I'll send y'all the email. I said, look, I don't know if this, if you're the right person or not. Let me know.
Yeah, this is a mess.
And, and, and like I said, I didn't hear from, I think just one person. And then, and then Gary came and talked, sat down with me, I think, last week.
Let, let me share one, one thing with you, Mrs. Newbert, because I think things are being taken totally out of context. The situation with the citizen that was trying to get a curb cut was not being bounced around all over the city. The ordinance, the UDC specifically said that all curb cuts had to be approved by the city engineer. Now, when a, when the law, and we got a couple of lawyers in here, says it shall be approved by the city engineer, that does not mean that the MPC director can approve it for the city engineer. So that's the reason that that citizen was being delayed until we could come to an agreement. And, and I reached out to, to Mr. Furlong and shared that with him, that, you know, until such time as the city engineer approves this curb cut, we cannot go forward, and he approved it.
But that's the first time that's ever happened, so who's been approving the other?
And I have no idea, and that's why I've agreed with you today, and you're giving this board the impression that we can't sit down, the four of us, and try to determine who should be doing these things. I still do not feel that it's something that you just decide that who should be doing these things, propose an amendment, and that's the way it happens.
I didn't want it that way.
But, you know, that, that's what we're saying. I mean, this is the, the questioning and the answering and the back and forth that's going. We, and it's giving the impression again that we are delaying citizens, but when we have specific instructions in the law, we do not go against those specific instructions. But commit, we've made a commitment, and I talked to these other gentlemen, and it's time for you and I to be talking to these two gentlemen at the same time, but that we can probably figure out exactly what needs to be happening and get it solved.
I think we can.
Mr. Joseph?
So at the time, I, I guess I have one, one last question. At the time, the, the code was being fashioned and it was being banded about to the different organizations in terms of approving it. What, what the discussions had at that time regarding who's going to do what, what department's going to be responsible for these things, or did these, this terminology just wind up in the code? I mean, it seems like these are discussions that would have taken place at least four, five years ago.
And, and, you know, Stephen was involved because this happened before. I think Patrick and I are in our functions as, as we are now. And he can share with you, I think this was during the Robert Westerman era, and he can share with you what Robert was, how Robert felt about these things and how it got in there.
That would help me.
Actually, Ron Norwood was, was the direct, was the city engineer at that time, Assistant City Engineer, was Robert Westerman. And it may be, I believe even Ali Mustafa may have been here at that, at that time. There was a draft, it was called a staff draft, it got, it got circulated to all the departments, including engineering, public works, all the different areas. There were comments made. I still have a PDF where comments were made by various people and what their comments were. So there was a vetting process. I, I think, you know, and this is some discussions that I've had with Patrick. There was a lot of, a lot of involvement in engineering in, in the past, but he shared with me that a lot of that didn't have standards and regulations associated with it. They were just used to making those decisions, and they made those decisions. So, you know, but, but to say that there wasn't, there was dialogue, there was comments, there were things made, and there were some suggestions that were changed and some things that were put in the code. We had an entire section on drainage, and it was, what Robert Westerman felt like that, you know, we didn't need to rewrite that, we'd only refer to the, the existing code, and that's what we did. So there were quite a number of, of changes that were prompted by, you know, at that time, but that predated Mr. Furlong. And so, you know, but just to speak specifically to that, I do have documentation on that. If any of you guys want to see that, we'd be glad to provide it. But, you know, we hear this a lot, you know, that, that not everybody got a chance to input on certain things in the code. And we've always been open-minded about listening to how we could correct the code and make it better.
Yeah, so, so I'd like to say something about that. I, I don't, I don't doubt what, what Stephen said. We've talked about it many times. And, and he sent me the comments. Robert Westerman, I think Barbara Featherstone made some comments. But, and, and I'm the one that made the comments about the drainage chapter. It was a long chapter about, so I, I was around.
I mean, you just weren't the director.
I, I was, we were in transition. I don't know if I was Assistant City Engineer interim. I was probably Assistant City Engineer.
But you were here.
But I was here. So I'm, I looked at the drainage, like, well, nobody does this, just, just refer to our ordinance, delete this and refer to our ordinance. But there were comments made, but I think that the general understanding of the other departments was that this was a document that the MPC is going to use to regulate. Not so much that we're going to use to regulate. So I think there was, there's always been confusion about the UDC. Because the UDC, it has lots of requirements. Things we're talking about today designate a person, but there's a lot of requirements in there that don't designate anybody. And stuff like that, we assume that that's something that the MPC regulates. They, they might assume something else, but it's not defined. So that's, that's part of the big job that we have ahead of us.
All right, at this particular time, Mr. Clark, Mr. Dean, what I hear you guys saying is that you're making a commitment to the board to sit down as soon as you can with this group of people you guys are talking about and try to come to some amicable situation to where we all can digest what's being talked about today and be able to move forward. We've been working on unraveling this UDC thing for some time.
Yes, sir.
And, and I agree with the comment you made a while ago. It's not going to happen overnight, but give us credit, we're working on it. Our staff's working on it. And if you were to not use the term delay and allow us to use the term defer and continue, we would really be happy if you'd let us do that. And get a commitment out of our staff that they'll move forward with that.
I'm, I'm game for whatever we want to do.
Sounds like a plan.
Yes, sir.
All right.
I'll make my motion.
In response, Mr. Andrews.
I'm sorry?
In response, everybody else is in total agreement to, with the defer and continue to work. We're trying to come up with the appropriate places where these responsibilities should be addressed.
Okay.
And, and we've been working on that for a while. Patrick is absolutely right. I mean, we've been working on this for a long time. And we continue to find faults, and we continue to find problems in the code, but the code was supposed to be a living document. And it, it's moving on a, on a regular basis. That's why for a while, you, every meeting you had, you had many, many amendments, COTEX amendments and so forth. And we just sort of slowed down because that's all we were doing. We were getting nothing else done, we were getting nothing done for the citizens other than amending the ordinance though. But we realize that, that this is important, this is necessary, and we're ready to do it.
Well, I have a motion. I would love to have a second.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Curtis, second by Ms. Newbert, that we defer and continue. All those in favor, please vote yes. So we'd love to have you come back again as we work our way through this, because we want as many people involved in moving this thing forward as we can, and thank you for being honest with us.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Good to see you, Mr. Furlong.
Thanks to the MPC staff.
Patrick, one more question. Do you, just from your perspective, a city engineer, do you think there needs to be some, I don't want to use, I mean, not, not pressure, but does it need to be an initiative within the city council and the parish commission and administration to really go in together and have focused time and effort on this issue? Because it's, it's all over, it's not just engineering. And I think everybody's interested, and it, everybody agrees, including MPC, that it, these changes need to take place and be addressed. It sounds like it's just not a high priority in, in from, coming from the top.
Yeah, any, any support we can get would help. Like I mentioned, deleting sections, that's our stopgap measure to, to address it. Because we don't have time to, to write a new code. Yeah, so any, any additional support and help we could get would be great. I, I feel like the UDC needs attention, but, but what we met about this morning was, was the whole process, you know, how, how does it all work? And, and how can we map that out, and how can it be clear to everybody who's doing what, especially, especially applicants?
Well, at least set up some sort of guideline and some sort of schedule in which this can take place and, and then wrap it up. Because otherwise it just kind of snowballs and keeps going, and nothing gets decided or done.
Yeah, and, and my position is, you know, and I'm trying to step out as much as I can, but if, if we need to do something, we're always going to help. But, but what, what our department was set up for was, was not permitting. We're, we're actually building a small permitting group because the MPC and the permits office has asked us to take on more stuff. And so we started a whole division of permitting in our office, which is our commitment to help, but it's also more of us working in silos and, and being in different departments. So I've, I've got mixed feelings about it, but we're just trying to do what we can.
I want to commend you for your leadership on this. This is a task.
It is a task.
I have, I have the image in my head from back when I used to play softball, baseball, people out in the outfield and the ball's up in there, I got it, I got it, you got it, and then nobody's got it. So, thank, thanks for your efforts.
Thank you.
Was there ever a time that the engineering department handled some of these things?
Not specifically these.
I forget what the amendment was, but it, it referred to changing it from city engineer to city traffic engineer. Was there ever a time that traffic engineering was under that department?
I don't think so.
Or some of the other departments?
The, the traffic engineering references, I don't think there's any contention with that. They're doing that now. But traffic engineering is in public works, it's, it's in a separate department, and.
Just thinking way back when, it may have been all under the city engineering department and whoever helped to write the UDC.
Not.
With that thought in mind.
Yeah, not, not that long ago, because, I mean, I've, I've been here for 10 years, and it's, it's been in public works that long.
Okay.
But, yeah, we look, look forward to working through this.
All right, so thank you.
Good to see you, Patrick.
Thank you. Good to see y'all.
All right. Item number 13, case number 21 dash 12 dash P UDC amendments, Shreveport Caddo MPC. Mr. Adam Baker?
You all did not devote, you all did not vote to.
To defer?
To defer.
Oh, we did.
Yes, sir.
They did?
Yeah.
I guess I missed it.
He just didn't read the, I don't think he read the result.
No, I did not read the result. I wish I'd carried.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey?
These amendments are for the parish in December. You all saw COTEX amendments to the city UDC in reference to special exception use. These are the equivalent, same amendments, but will be going into the parish UDC. Essentially, it'll allow certain special exceptions for mobile homes, transient vacation homes, and, or requirements for mobile homes, transient vacation rentals, and barber and beauty shops. However, when you do move forward, just approve it as amended. There is one mistake on amendment five. In the memo, it doesn't say transient vacation rentals, it needs to, but if you approve it as amended, I will include that when I send it to the parish commission. Any questions?
And the genesis for this was to give an avenue for exception zoning for manufactured homes?
Manufactured homes, to be able to be placed in certain residential districts with a special exception use approval.
And the appeal process would be like any other, it would go to the Caddo Parish Commission?
Uh, no, the, the, it will go in front of the ZBA.
Okay, but what if, what happens from there?
What if they approve it?
When they make their decision to say it's not favorable to the candidate's request?
You can appeal it to the Caddo Parish.
They can, they will, they will appeal it to the Caddo Commission.
That's what, okay, that's what I was, I just want to make sure that they have an appeal process.
Yes.
Okay.
And the city, it would be appealed to city council.
Okay.
And this was just, as I shared with you on yesterday, this was just a request from the Caddo Parish Commission. The president of the Caddo Parish Commission that manufactured homes were allowed in the city, in residential districts, and they were not allowed in the parish because they were more appropriate in areas in the parish than they are in the city. And they just wanted this amendment done in order for the citizens in the parish to be able to apply for manufactured homes.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, any more questions for Mr. Bailey on item number 13? Hearing none, then we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second. A motion to approve as amended by Ms. Newbert, second by Mr. Joseph. All those in favor, please vote yes. Motion's carried, thank you very much. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we'll move into old business and let someone see something I'm not seeing in front of me. Are there any committee chair reports that anyone knows of? All right, then under new business, we have a consideration. Well, first we have research. Any comments?
And we do, I'm waiting, I'm looking for Adam.
He's right behind you.
Because I'd asked him to, in this section, to share with you the progress that community planning was making on short-term, short-term rentals and a renter's home code in, in the city Shreveport.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Yes, community.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Uh, yes, community, uh, planning is working fiercely for a short-term rental ordinance that will go in front of, uh, you as the NPC board in June. We have had three public forums, um, with residents existing, uh, short-term rental, uh, host in the city. Uh, we are going to have a fourth public forum that's open to the public. It's gonna be right here on May the twenty-first, which is a Friday, at two PM. We're gonna do a press release later this week where we're gonna, uh, release an ordinance, uh, guidelines, uh, FAQ and whatnot. Um, in hopes of getting some good feedback, uh, from neighborhoods, residents. We're gonna put it on our MPP page, even though it's not an official, uh, neighborhood participation plan. We're gonna put it there to let everyone know. We're gonna put it on our Facebook account, Instagram, whatnot, to get the word out. As I said, public release, so if, uh, any of the media outlets wanna come and talk to Mr. Clark or myself or whoever, we'll be able to do so, uh, in hopes of getting good feedback to bring in front of you, uh, at your June NPC board meeting. Uh, when it comes to the housing rental ordinance, uh, we are reviewing, uh, best practices nationwide on that. We're not just looking at, uh, in a regional aspect, uh, but we're moving forward and looking at, uh, best ways to, uh, solve that problem as directed by the master plan.
Alright. Any other comments on the research?
Can I say?
Alright, ladies and gentlemen, the next item is, in his absence, Mr. Dale Calvin asked us to put on here consideration to change the regularly scheduled public hearing time from three PM to one PM. Because he's not here, uh, even though he's not here, we'll entertain any kind of comments. Uh, but I, I know he's real, has been real adamant about it, so we consented to ask that it be put on the agenda for discussion today. Any comments from anyone, uh, relative to this particular, uh, discussion item?
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Newbert.
Okay, I have one. Um, we are looking at some changes possibly with this board, depending on what the parish commission does with the zoning. Um, that will take us down to December thirty-first. On January one, the, uh, House Bill six-nine-seven act, I forget the act, but will become officially in place. And I'm certain prior to that time, we will, well, we would hope prior to that time, we would know what is gonna happen here with this board, if anything. I'm, I'm the one person on the board that's in the unincorporated area. So, I attended a meeting with Mr. Clark and Mr. Jean on the long-range planning, uh, part of that. I can't say for certain what's gonna happen. They're still throwing ideas around and maybe heading in some direction, but it's still well unknown at this point, I think, what the final's gonna be. So given that, I think it would be probably not in the best interest of the board at this time to make any decisions, to change anything, because we're looking at some changes that are gonna be out of our control uh, at the end of the year. And we are two board members short today. That, if I'm not mistaken, they were parish appointments as well. So, um...
Mrs. Smith was a city appointment.
Was she city? Okay, I stand corrected.
Yeah, Mr. Roker was a parish appointment.
So, I, I would think that it would be probably my opinion, in our best interest, just to leave things as they are, because we're gonna be looking at some, probably some significant changes coming forward. So that's just my opinion on it.
Sounds good to me. Alright, Mr. Joseph, Mr. Anderson, any comment?
I'm just curious what, uh, Mr. Calvin's, uh...
Angle is?
What is, yeah, what's his emphasis on this, yeah?
Well, I, I, perhaps maybe I spoke too much yesterday, but I'm, I'm in the same thought process that Ms. Newbert's in.
I agree.
Uh, a year in, Mr. Albertson and Mr. Joseph, uh, that perhaps maybe the best thing for us to do right now is to proceed business as usual and be prepared to make the adjustments, uh, whatever they may be, six or seven months from now, uh, so that the system that we're operating in can continue to move forward in the best interest of citizens, of, of not only Shreveport, but Cattle Parish as well.
I mean, and to the extent that, I, I mean, I, I think y'all all work. I think, you know, you make, are you retired?
I'm luckily retired.
Right, but you worked.
Trying very hard, yeah.
And so, I mean, it asks not only a lot of the citizens and the business owners who are bringing their management floors, but I think it asks a terrible amount of us. I know me personally, that the time between one and three o'clock, I mean, you see me running in here this afternoon at three fifteen. I mean, at, at one, that would be a catastrophe, catastrophe for my practice. And I, it's, it's come up at least five times since I've been on this board. Often tangentially, I think this may have been, this may be the first time it's actually gonna be up for a vote. I think you've kinda tossed it in at the end of some meetings before. But my sentiment remains the same. I just don't think it's a good idea. Even if down the road, uh, we have demonstrable changes in the way we do business, I think the time, uh, at least for me, would, I, it'd be beneficial if it remained kind of where it is right now.
And that was my comment about being, that was the reason for my comment about being already two board members down. With cer- I certainly don't wanna see a situation occur that we lose board members over a two-hour period. We're already short as it is. So I think it's in our best interest.
Given, given that, I think it's, uh, terrible.
Well, Mr. Rudy, you're number five. You're the only one that, uh, we've not extended an opportunity to make a comment. And I know you're new, uh, I know, uh, you're practicing being retired as hard as you can. Uh, but I can share this with you and for Ms. Newbert's sake too, uh, and some of the others now. Uh, I can remember a time when we started at one and we didn't get out till seven PM, uh, in the evening. Now, some of the predecessors to our administration that we have now saw fit to make some of those changes and eliminate some of the things that we don't have to do, deal with today that we did back then, that created the situation for us to be here until dark. And, uh, I agree with you guys, uh, the situation that we're in now, you look at the clock, we're about ready to walk out the door if I quit talking over here. And, uh, I think that...
Well, don't sell Mr. Clark short.
What we would probably be more interested in at this point is someone to make a motion and then it becomes official until we, uh, move towards twenty-twenty-two. And then we'll be prepared to address whatever situation, uh, it comes to us at that time.
So I, I don't have a problem with doing that. I, I will, uh, did you have, so ahead.
I was just gonna make a comment.
Okay, you go ahead.
I don't meet whatever time you say we meet until I can't meet, and then I'll resign.
Alright, alright, Ms. Lawrence?
So I was just gonna say, in, in light of that request, that I would like to make a motion that, that we keep the time, the meeting time at three P, PM, arriving as Mr. Windsor requests at two forty-five.
I'll second that.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote yes. Alright, motion carries. Uh, we're down to item number sixteen, other matters to be reviewed by the commission, the director's report. Uh, Mr. Clark?
Why are you looking at me? Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
I'm not sure about that.
I, I, I will share with you that, that, on, on the motion and vote that you just took, that I think that the neighborhood participation plan meetings have done a whole lot to, uh...
I agree.
Keep people from feeling the need to pike the chambers, uh, for issues. It was like, uh, it was explained to you yesterday by Alice and Stephen, uh, about the Brookshires down on, uh, Southern Loop, that there were over a hundred people at the meeting and they were probably evenly divided, uh, for support and, and opposition, uh, or concern and support. And you noticed that not a soul showed up at this meeting. And like Mr. Andrews, uh, I, I've been around a few days, uh, and seen a few hearings. And ordinarily, uh, an issue like that, uh, we would not even be getting close to, to leaving at this point. So I think, I think that they're, they're working. We're, we're, we're trying to continue to refine how they're conducted. Uh, we try to keep them from getting into shouting matches, uh, and, and we try just to set a, a scenario where an applicant can come in, explain exactly what's being proposed and answer all questions that citizens have about, uh, what's being proposed and give some, some information about the development. A lot of times, they're showing, uh, renderings, uh, elevations of what's being proposed, which is, which people like visuals, uh, uh, a- as you probably know, that, that goes a long ways. So I, I think, I think that they're really, uh, they're really benefiting us a whole lot. And that's gonna ensure that possibly you don't have many meetings where we're here until ten o'clock at night. Uh, and, and just, you know, the, this Cattle Parish Commission has a work session at a, at a meeting and both of those meetings are held at three-thirty. And the Shreveport City Council meets at three o'clock. Uh, they once had a work session, but they combined both meetings. And the reason that they were doing that was to, uh, make provisions to allow persons that are working and, and citizens that wanna come down as close as they could, sort of having meetings at night. Uh, cut, uh, have a later time. And that's why, Mr. Andrews, you will remember that was one of the reasons that the NPC decided to change its meetings from one o'clock to three o'clock. So, uh, I just wanted to share that with you. I think you did a, made a wonderful decision because as Mrs. Newbert has stated, uh, things are very unsettled right now. And we really don't know what we're headed into, uh, as I look around the, the horseshoe. I mean, you know, I see, I see three parish appointees and two city appointees, uh, and we may end up with, uh, depending on what the Cattle Parish Commission does, there may be a Cattle Parish Commission Planning Board that consists of nine members from unincorporated areas. And the city council will appoint nine members, uh, for a planning commission board for residents of the city. Uh, or they may come up with a, a process that could possibly combine the two boards, which, uh, I don't think that that's likely to happen, but that's, that's another idea that, that we continue to fascinate ourselves with. But, uh, so I, I think you made a, a great decision today, uh, in, uh, just leaving the meeting. People have gotten accustomed to the three o'clock. The, the thing about change is once you change, it causes all type of chaos and confusion. You know, if you let peo- if you let citizens, you stay with where you are with citizens, I've learned this, uh, I'm getting old. But if you stay where you are, citizens, uh, don't get mad with you. But the minute you start changing times, they start thinking that you're trying to prevent them from coming and they get angry. So, I commend you for what you've done today.
Or adopt, not go to UDC.
And, and, and I'm, I'm making this real fast because Mr. Joseph has asked me not to prolong comments this afternoon. But, uh, I, I would like for you to hear from, uh, the zoning administrator about the, uh, the, the, the number of certificates of occupancies, uh, that I'd just like for you to know because it lets us know that, uh, Shreveport never really shut down. Uh, it, it maintained, it, not the level that it needs to be at, but it maintained, uh, the same level basically that it's always, uh, been at. So is Reginald over there? I can never see.
He's in there.
He stepped out?
He's right here.
Oh, I, I can never see. Th- these flexi-glass screens are difficult to see.
Mr. Andrews, while waiting on him, he's pecking. Um, I'd like to get some information, um, on the committees and who's on the committees. Mr. Morton and I do not know what they are in.
You mean subcommittees for this board?
Correct, correct, yes.
Oh, that will be no problem?
Okay.
I will ask Ms. Trent to send that information out to each board member.
Okay.
Very good, thank you.
Alright. You ready, sir?
I, I will have it with me.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was...
I went through the entire long spiel.
Yeah, you did. You really, you really blew him up there.
I saw his face when you said that. It was like, huh.
Yeah, I was, I was trying to log, I have it on, on my computer. I'm trying to...
There was a Scooby-Doo moment.
And I, and I, and I would, and my final comment, uh, Mr. Chairman, is that...
Yes, sir.
We, 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 seriously, uh, board, I mean, this staff and I are trying with everything we have to address every concern that different departments, citizens, different pub- special public interest groups have with the UDC. Everybody has a concern, unfortunately, uh, but it was, this was a result of, of change again, where we did a, a, a very intensive code that came from the piecemeal of section one oh-six in the city and section fifty-four in the parish, where we just kept trying to, to put a patch on to get, uh, to just address whatever problem came up. So, we are well aware that it's not perfect. Uh, we're very, very well aware of the imperfections of the ordinance. Uh, we, we, we meet with city departments, we meet with the administration, we coordinate with the parish commission, we coordinate with the city council. What I'm sharing with you, so you'll understand, that when someone comes in and say that we're not, uh, being receptive, that's not true. It's just we have so many people to meet with and everybody considered that the UDC was the MPC's ordinance and it's not just the MPC's ordinance. If we ever get that, 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 that truth within our brains, that this is the city of Shreveport's ordinance, not the MPC's ordinance.
And the parish commission.
And the Cattle Parish Commission's ordinance. And they both voted and adopted this, this ordinance.
Well, that's why, that's why I asked Mr. Furlong if, if, if he should go to his boss, who is part of, you know, who's responsible, that, that position within the city of implementing this and, you know, going through the whole process. And, uh, they should coordinate it from the top down and it should become a priority for everybody to resolve this, at least on, on the city and parish side who, who implemented this. I mean, you're not gonna address everybody's concerns as a citizen immediately. I mean, we're, we're, you're working hard to with the amendments, but the, at least the city needs to get its act together and, and make it a priority within, within the different departments and work with you, you know? It, it's their code.
Right, and, 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 and that's what I wanted to share with you at this, as this period, that the city has done that. And we are working together. Now, we may not be working at the speed that Mr. Furlong would want us to be working at, but we are working to resolve these issues that it's not just the MPC. I share it with you. I will ask them to come to the next meeting. There is a Department of Public Works, there is a Department of Water and Sewer, there's a Department of SPAR. There are multiple departments in the city that could come and share with you that things are happening. Uh, you know, but Mr. Furlong took upon himself to address concerns that he felt that the city engineer's office should not be involved in. And Stephen has been around like I have been. I mean, that department has evolved over the years. At one time, that was a Department of Operational Services. That was a mul- multiple department with, that included water and sewer, that included, uh, public works, included city engineering, included traffic engineering. And a lot of these decisions and a lot of these, uh, recommendations were made during that time. You had one person that was over that many departments. So, you know, as you go through the process of trying to, to determine what needs to come out and like Stephen said, that the easiest thing to say is that, you know, and I've heard it since my two years, is that nobody listened to me, nobody contacted me, nobody wanted to hear what I had to say. That's the easiest thing to say. But the, the difficult thing is correcting these things, and that's what we are committed to doing. And the administration, the mayor and the CAO have asked us to correct these things. And we are committed to doing that. But I just wanted to share that with you, that sometimes when, if I would just start walking around city, uh, government plaza saying what we're no longer gonna do and assigning it to somebody else, you'd have the same responses that, that we're giving.
Well, that was my concern, is were we, were we moving a task, a responsibility to another department by do- by looking at these ordinances the way they were written?
And that's what I was sharing with you.
This is a, this is a huge project. This is something that has to, in my opinion, needs to be worked on internally and then the final product be brought to us if we have to vote on it. And so that we know that the organizational chart and where these responsibilities lie have been decided by the department head. have been decided by the department heads and that the departments know they're responsible for those tasks.
And that's why these department heads asked you to date to defer and continue this, to allow them to be involved in the process of not having another department just assign tasks to them.
I get it.
Can I ask you another question on that, on that topic? That, is there, is the permit, does the permit office have within it representatives or people, or an engineer, for instance? I know there's a plumbing, there's a plumbing person in there. And, and could the process be contained at that level as far as?
Inspectors, or is that what you're asking?
No, no.
I know you said, I'm waiting if you get through, I'll answer.
Yeah.
You know, the, 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 the initial idea of the permit center because I was, I keep dating myself, but I was involved in the, uh, the desire for one stop shop permitting. Uh, when we created, uh, we recall, I'm trying to think of the name, but this was under, uh, this was under Mayor Bo Williams and, and Wendell Collins was the C A O at the time. And we developed this idea of one stop shop permitting. And in that one stop shop permitting, that was a representative from the Water and Sewer Department, from the Engineering Department, uh, all in the permit center. So when someone came in, they would get an answer because a representative was there. Over the years, I think that, and I'm, I'm far removed and Reginald will have to help me out, but over the years, uh, the, uh, the person from Water and Sewer has moved out, the person from Fire Prevention has moved out, the person from Engineering is no longer in the permit center. So, you know, possibly that might be a solution to part of the problem of, uh, suggesting to the administration to place persons from these departments back in the permit center and we try to reestablish a one stop shop permitting system. We have the software, we just don't have the, the personnel.
That'd be good for the citizens, I think.
Yes.
I, and, and, and you have, you, you know, like, we know that COVID, uh, has, has totally destroyed, uh, how the city operates because you still got people working, uh, teleworking. Uh, and, and that's, that's just the way that things are gonna be, that, uh, you know, and there are still departments that contend that they work much better if their employees telework than having them to come down to the building and they said it, you know, with teleworking, we save on utilities, we save on all kind of different things, uh. So it's hard to pull everything back together that COVID tore apart. But, uh, those are, those are discussions that are being had. Our ten department head staff meeting every Monday morning and those are the things that we're talking about.
I think that would be a good solution. I mean, it's not in my purview to tell the city that, but I think that one stop shop is.
Well, I prefer to use the term a new normal and when we get that new normal is coming, whatever it is, it, it won't be the way it used to be. I had a couple of more things, uh, that I wanted you to comment on. Uh, you did a little bit of it yesterday, board member status.
Okay.
That's one.
As of May twenty-sixth, three city appointees will, terms will end. Uh, that would, those three board members are Dale Carvin, Leah DiMatto and Mrs. Bestin Smith. And I've talked to both of the Dale and Leah and they have requested to, uh, ask the city to reappoint them at least until the end of twenty twenty-one. Mrs. Smith has said that she no longer would like to be reappointed. Emily and I found out, uh, this, this morning that, uh, if Miss Smith had gone, I think, uh, the rest of the year, she would have served on the board for twenty years.
I have kind of.
Uh, but she said that she's done all she can do and she's asked that she will not be reappointed. So, you know, we will wait to see what the administration does. Cattle Parish Commission is real quick to make appointments. City of Shreveport takes its time making appointments. So if they are not reappointed, uh, no one is, no one is, uh, confirmed to replace them, they will just continue until such time as the city appoints somebody.
Mr. Roca's situation?
Mr. Roca, uh, eh, as a businessman, uh, Mr. Roca stated that, uh, he was residing from the board. That's the reason that he's been missing meetings. Uh, he just did not have the time to commit to the, uh, the board. You know, things like you all are saying that he has to be out of town a lot, uh, and he is, just does not have the time to come to the meetings. And he would feel much better moving himself out of the way to have someone to serve on the board that had the time to be on the board.
All right.
Before you end, I got those numbers for you, mister.
Okay, all right. We'll come in just a second. One other thing, I, I visited with Mr. Clark yesterday after the meeting on, via telephone and I was in the presence of a meeting where Mr. Kent Rogers with N L C O G, uh, did a fifteen minute or so presentation and, uh, there was an opportunity to talk about the five things that were going on around the city that affects all of us as it relates to area of transportation. And, uh, I asked him to consider us, perhaps maybe getting him either here or Zoom on a Tuesday, uh, once we finish our prepping session, to let him do a short presentation to talk about things like the Seventy Street Bridge, uh, the Barksdale Interchange, uh, thirty-one, thirty-two south towards the port or the intercity connector of I forty-nine. And then there was a fifth one that won't come to me right now. But I think that the kinds of questions that you guys get when people say, oh, yeah, you on the M P C, you ought to know about such and such. I think, uh, having him to talk about their status right now as to where they are, it may confuse us, but then at the same time, it gives us something, uh, to be able to answer to. And at the same time, I think we all know that Mr. Carvin was elected to chair the Master Plan Committee representing us and the three bodies, but right now, that's all on hold based on what we, uh, see coming down the road. Did I say all that correctly?
The parish chose not to appoint, the parish commission chose not to appoint anybody at this point to the Master Plan, uh, Advisory Committee. Uh, so by them not choosing to appoint anyone, we've had to decide, uh, to, whether to wait on them or just have representatives from the city council and, and the M P C. We had always hoped that this would be an excellent opportunity for parish commissioners to have discussions and dialogue with city council persons and M P C members about the future, but they chose to not go in that direction.
All right, young man?
Oh, okay, all right. Just getting back to what we were saying about certificates of occupancy that's been issued for the, for the, the month and also for the year, just to show that the numbers are still tracking where home-based business is, was popular right now. So in the last month, uh, commercial businesses, we had thirteen certificates of oc- occupancy issued for commercial businesses and we had a total of twenty-four issued. That's from April fifth to May fifth today. Uh, from year to date, uh, commercial C O's will be a hundred and thirty-three, uh, and home base is a hundred and sixty-two from January first to now. Uh, we had zero issued in the parish in the past month. Home base or, uh, commercial, but for the past year, we had two commercial and ten home base in the parish, year to date.
All right, any questions for this young man? As we come to a close, Mr. Clark, a couple of, three or four, five months ago, we talked a little bit about, uh, as if y'all don't have enough to do already, to tell us a little bit about some of these, uh, things that we've approved that are perhaps maybe in, under construction or in the process of moving forward as a result of our chewing on them standing out front and then granting them permission to go ahead and, and start work, uh, at some time in the future.
We will, we will get that.
To-do list.
We will make that a part of, of the meetings, uh.
Great, that'd be good.
I will ask Stephen to make sure that that's done at, at every meeting going forward.
Well, I've seen a couple that are going on that I think are just exciting, uh, uh, especially when I'm going out I twenty, the guy who wanted to sell temporary buildings, they've torn down and dozed it off the place and it really makes the Pines Road exit look good. Uh, and there's several others that, uh, I have noticed that we had a hand in, in having them stand before us and ask for, uh, our permission. Now, I can't say too much more about the car dealership on I twenty, but that's another subject. We'll talk about that in the, in the outside on the steps.
That's, that's a whole, and, and I think that it probably would be more appropriate to, to get those reports to you that Tu- on the Tuesday, pre-meeting sessions and we will, we will have them electronic so that you'll have them on, on, on your computers. And Mr. Jordan will have, uh, that one electronically on Tuesday also hopefully. Uh, so you'll have all that information to be grateful.
Mr. Andrews.
Yes, ma'am.
Along that same lines, I saw the, the cell tower that we approved on North Market and it's a beast, but it's, it looks nice. It's a beast, but it looks nice. They did a good job with it.
That's like the sign at the corner of Seventy Street and Bird Coons too, uh, I mean, uh, the Parkway. It's a, if you, if you wanna see a different kind of a sign erected, you just pass by that intersection and look over by the sleep clinic. It's a different kind of sign. We'll entertain a motion, Mr. Joseph.
So move.
Yeah, be, be, uh, I just wanted to say one, one last thing, Mr. Joseph.
Yes.
The, the National Conference of American Planning Association is going on. It started today. It is a virtual con- conference. We are participating, uh, in the conference. Uh, it just so happened that it started on the day of your meeting, but, uh, we are going to sessions, we're looking. I, 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 I went through one session with short-term rentals. Uh, we're looking at rule planning sessions, uh, it's a wonderful conference, uh, we're doing rules just in case we are involved in the unincorporated areas of Cattle Parish, uh, have a much better understanding of planning and zoning activities. But I wanted you to know that staff was being, uh, educated, if you will, uh, concerning the, the new, uh, n- new, uh, directions of planning and zoning. And we will be in that conference until Friday. And they're hoping to have a live conference, uh, next year as well as the state.
All right. Meeting's adjourned.